13 board meeting at this time. Mary Beth, do you want to explain again?
Yes. The reason that we're reading virtually like this is due to the COVID virus. So the public is invited and able to participate. And the board is present virtually as well.
Okay, so before we begin, this has nothing to do with the board, but anyone who is in the so-called audience, it would be really nice if you could mute yourself for now unless you are hoping to speak at the beginning of the meeting or if you've arranged, as a few people have, to give prior permission. And so when it's your time to speak, you can unmute yourself. I know there's a number of people out there. I'm very encouraged that people are participating. We want to thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and have roll call. Mary Beth?
Okay. Ashley Anderson?
Yeah.
Judy Downs?
Yeah.
Rihanna, Sarah Geiser?
Here.
Mark Smith?
Here.
Catherine Hauser?
Here.
Sarah Schmitz? Stacy Anderson?
Here.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Someone's down.
Smith, second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, same? Thank you.
Catherine, could I make a quick suggestion? For anyone who is not a board member or the superintendent or our board secretary, could you turn off your video until you are going to speak? That'll help just keep the focus on the screen to fewer thumbnails. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're at the point in the meeting where if there is communication from the public, if there is anyone who wishes to express input, this does not include the people who previously arranged to speak. So is there anyone out there who would like to visit with us? I take it there's no one at the AO?
If this is public comment, my name's Cassandra Klein, and I just had a quick question. And perhaps this will be discussed by the board later, but I'm just curious on the district's decision to require face masks for younger children. And who's going to be responsible for ensuring the face masks are worn during the day, ensuring that they don't become a hazard to the educational environment?
Thank you for that. Technically, we can't respond, but I believe you'll be happy with some items later. Is there anyone else?
Catherine, this is Jennifer Gardner, and I had emailed earlier. Are you going to go through that list as well? Or should we, if we emailed, we should comment now?
Are you part of Rolling Green?
No.
Okay, I did not get an email, but this would be the place where you could speak. So please tell us your name and your address.
Sure. I'm Jennifer Gardner, and I actually have a statement to read. I live at 7305 Tuana Drive. I realize that we have important matters to deal with tonight, with how to return to learn with the coronavirus in our midst. I want to focus on the other pandemic we are fighting in our country right now, which is racism. A few weeks ago, the Urbendell City Council had a listening session for our community. I watched from home as children and youth spoke about their experiences. And it made me, it made me really emotional then, too. I heard their need for safety, equity, and representation. It was heartbreaking to hear them talk about their experiences. The Urbendell Community School District needs to take action to improve our systems and review every policy for racism. I appreciate that you have a new staff person in the new diversity position, but it will not be just that person's job to fix the culture of our district. It will be every one of our jobs to do this. As you continue this evening and moving forward, please keep in mind how the decisions being made about the coronavirus pandemic affect the racism pandemic. Here is some info from Capital Crossroads, a central Iowa vision group that includes Mayor Andewig, on how to build a more equitable and inclusive community. First, have a variety of ethnic communities and people of color informed. Have they been meaningfully involved and authentically represented in the process and/or decision? Two, is there a group that benefits more than another because of the process or decision? Three, what could be one unintended consequence of this process and/or decision for ethnic communities or communities of color? And four, what action will be implemented to advance equity in this process and decision? I look forward to hearing about the district's work on anti-racism in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, you see Sarah's here?
No. Sarah, are you present now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
Are you speaking of the people who got permission yet or just?
No. Okay. Uh, for Rolling Green, there is a group from Rolling Green. Otherwise, now Jane.
Oh, okay. I have a statement as well. I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You want to say your name?
Yes. I'm getting there in the next sentence. My name is Jane Robinett, and I live at 4302 131st Circle in Urbendell. I grew up attending and graduating from Urbendell Public Schools and now support the district as a taxpayer. Last month, I also attended the city's listening session on race and diversity via livestream and was concerned about what I heard from some of the speakers who attend Urbendell schools. And what I heard was the pain of these young people. The schools were not the sole source of that pain, but they were a significant one. After listening to the last board meeting and looking at the equity and inclusion plan on the agenda today, I know I'm entering into the middle of discussions already underway, and I apologize for that. But the listening session compelled me to ask you today to act urgently on behalf of these young people, to make space and time for conversations about racism for students, teachers, coaches, and leadership, to listen to students about what might improve their school experience, to prioritize the hiring of educators and other teachers of color, and to implement a plan naming issues, crafting strategies to address, and setting measurable outcome goals to improve our schools for working and learning. I know that you have a lot on your plate. You've had to make major adjustments during the coronavirus pandemic, and those are ongoing. But these young people are literally crying to be heard. And I'm glad you've hired someone to focus on equity and inclusion, but countering racism in our schools and our community is work for all of us. And we all must get to that work without delay. So I urge you to keep moving forward with urgency and long-term commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you so much.
President Hauser, I have another one that I remember wasn't sure if he could make the meeting. So he asked, request that I read his statements.
Okay. Say his name.
It's Mr. Vern Millsap, 8412 New Urbendell. He states, and I quote, "My concerns. Number one, the kids need structured time and teachers not staying at home. Number two, no federal money if kids don't go back to school. Number three, Education Secretary wants schools to be open and fall, and parents should too. Number four, kids that are below age 24, low infection rate. Number five, WHO Director General to testify before Congress." Think about that. Why? Number six, we were told social distancing and mask would work, so why the panic? Number seven, this will ruin our education system and soon no funding going to those schools. Why pay teachers and administration if they're going to work half the time? Number eight, defund the police soon. It will defund education. What about our kids? Our teachers have a union. Unions should support the teachers going back to work. Number 10, teachers and administration have helped implementation of Common Core already, which is junk. Number 11, high risk can come late and be funneled to special areas of school and wear masks. Number 12, do not destroy all of our children's education for a few. Take precautions. For 13, parents and teachers who have major concerns need to look at the majority and find some alternative that will work for their children themselves. This sounds mean. Sorry. Protect our children's education, please. Vern Millsap.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, if not, we will skip future agenda item. And so we will go down to number five, facility update. So Steve, do you want to handle that one?
Are you doing facilities? Are you coming back to four or what are your plans? This is crossing my mind.
I made an assumption that those are for another meeting.
Um, the actual information, one of the items under B, one was, we had requested about the equity inclusion entry plan. So I wasn't sure if those were for future then or not.
Steve, if I could jump in for just a second. This is Krista Carlisle. Hi, everyone. Our new Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion, Ryan Williamson, worked on this document. And because it's under information only, we assumed it would be discussed. Questions could be asked by the board that would be addressed in at the next meeting. But I also, Ryan was planning on being here tonight. And so since when he was hired, we did not have the opportunity to introduce him to the board. We thought we could take just a moment and just introduce him so you see a face to go with a name. But he was planning on addressing questions that the board might have at the next meeting. Ryan?
That's what I planned. Ryan?
Oh, good evening. How's it going?
Hi.
Welcome, Ryan. It's good to see another Roosevelt grad in the Urbendell family.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I'm very excited. I'm excited to join this team. I have really hit the ground running. And I think I'd like to, just a quick second to thank the senior leadership team for just welcoming me, welcoming me with open arms. I have literally dived in to the fire, if you will. But on the first day, they have really taken the time to include my voice and really ask and want my voice in these conversations. And so for that, I am very appreciative. I'm really looking forward to getting to work. As you heard, I heard two passionate parents really want some action surrounding our culture, our inclusion practices and our equity practices. And, and I just want you to know that with every conversation that we have, I know I'm definitely, as well as my team, are looking at it through an equity lens. So that is going to always remain in our conversation, in our discussions. I sat down and had a meeting with our high school principal this morning. And we just, just kind of talked, just to kind of get a feel on some things that he would like to implement and how I can support them. I've also been in contact with the middle school principal, and I'm in the process of meeting with our elementary principal. So we're, we're going. We're going. But this is going to definitely be something that's going to be ongoing, the start of July 1st, and it's going to be a part of the Urbendell culture moving forward. So rest assured, I'm in this. I'm on your team. We are a team, and we will, we will definitely get to where we need to be.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to hearing from you next month.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, so Catherine, hi, Ryan. This is Sarah. I'm a board member as well. But um, so I think we need to be like a little more clear moving forward, though. Like, right now, when we, I think we, I guess I was under the impression we were going to not address this a month from now. So I just, what, what was stated to me by a trusted friend is that we don't have the time to continue to wait. And so when we are getting the information and then we're pushing back questions for weeks, I think we're waiting too long for kids in our district who have already been waiting kind of a lifetime to get a response. So Catherine, this is directed at Catherine, sorry. Um, so in the future, can we, when we start talking about, like, just our plan for moving forward, can we have it come up for the next meeting? Is that fair? Like, I guess tonight I thought we were going to have more of a, you know, a discussion around this. So um, can, does that make sense?
Are you talking about the search firm meeting?
No, no, the plan, sorry, no, the plan that they, that they, that was in the board packet.
Yeah, we will, we will be reviewing some of the equity plans that are in there. And I think we can welcome Ryan and whomever is on those committees to please participate in the manner that we had participated at the last meeting, which is more of a discussion. Those items are not actually action items. They're actually discussion items, which I will clarify as we go forward.
Okay, so we are still going to discuss them?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I thought you were sorry. I misunderstood, guys. I thought we were saying that we weren't going to have a, you know, any discussion around those.
Well, we will on those items because we didn't get through all of them on the plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarification.
Yes. Okay, so all of these items officially will be addressed on the August 13 meeting, unless you hear from someone before that. I'm trying to continue my practice of asking all of you to submit suggestions for agenda items about a week before the next meeting so that we can get them on there and get it clarified. So I'd welcome you, please, to do that. Or anytime, please communicate with me. Okay, so at this point, unless I hear differently, we're going to go to the facilities update.
We start with Homestead Elementary. Making good progress on that, and the weather's really been great. And, you know, if you drive by there, you can, it's to a place where you can see improvement. So a lot of the structural steel is going up and completed. And they should have it enclosed here in about five weeks roughly. So that's kind of exciting. You'll see most of the walls from the office. And they're just, overall, just making tremendous progress on that, as well as some of the driveways, again, trying to get those things done in a timely manner. And other projects, the safety entrances at the high school in Webster are coming along. There was an error in the product that was bought for hardware, but they're waiting on those. But they are definitely, should be ready here if we were to open our schools in August. So that's exciting. HVAC project at the high school is going very well. Not quite as many people working on site at this time as they're quite a bit done. They're, they're working on even the control panels and working on those. But they have areas where they're getting completed, in the locker rooms and in the offices. But overall, that project's going very well as well. If you recall, originally, it was to be done by the end of summer, and that is still the expectation. The turf, with the new turf is, has been completed. There are just a couple of punchless items that they have to walk through and just tweak a couple of areas, but it's basically done. So I'll take any questions that you might have and attempt to answer those.
Okay. Not seeing any. We'll move on to the action items. And so just for your reference, board members, 6A, B, 2, C, and D are discussion items. They don't call for any action.
Yep. So, hi, everyone. This is Krista. I'm happy to start the conversation on 6A, the update on the equity section of the Return to Learn Plan. If I'm able, I'm going to share my screen, Deena, if you wouldn't mind giving me that permission. And we will go through these remaining items that we started last week and have the leaders of those various areas share that, the summary of those actions. Here we go.
Krista, do you have access?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm going to just jump into this document, which was the PDF of the Return to Learn Plan. We, again, last week went through leaders, or last time, leadership, infrastructure, health and safety. Sorry, I'm going somewhat quickly. Iowa academic standards, social, emotional, behavioral, mental health. However, with respect to equity, we divided the document that the state shared with us, the supporting document, into several different pieces. So I am going to let Shawna Eshelman talk very quickly here about the IEP plan overview. And I will click in and have that document up while she talks to it. So Shawna?
Hi. Um, last week, I was, I think I actually finished last week, Krista. So I can review, I can review if, if everybody wants me to. But I actually am the one that finished last week.
Nope. That's my bad.
It would start with Carrie.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody want me to review anything or any questions for me?
I can hardly remember what I've had for breakfast these days.
I know. I know.
Okay, thank you. All right. So English learners, Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
You bet. So um, the main thing to know that regardless of which model we are utilizing, we will continue to have our language instruction for our students with teachers having regular contact. We know that the biggest key for us will be the communication piece so that whether it is general education curriculum or our English learner language curriculum, that we're making sure that students and their families are able to access that and have the knowledge of how to navigate the different sites and access that. One of the pieces that we did receive guidance from at the state level is a process to be able to provisionally provide services to students. Each year, typically, this would most affect our kindergartners. We screen anywhere from 50 to 70 students each year to determine whether or not they qualify for the English learner program. And that is an online assessment that is often done one-on-one with students, with teacher and student together at the computer. But there is a process to be able to provisionally include students in the program until it is safe to do that testing one-on-one like we normally would. The one piece that has already been instrumental is that, you might recall in the spring, that we did add a Burmese and Chin translator. We were able to find somebody extremely qualified, somebody that we had worked with previously. And so he has already been very instrumental in helping with our communications at Rolling Green. So that is, unless people have specific questions about the English learner plan.
So would your plan be to provisionally kind of err on the side of just accepting kids that need support? That assessment would not be able to be done remotely?
Yep, there's a questionnaire that you would go through to determine if it's likely that they would have. So, so you still will do some one-on-one with the student and with their family. It would just be questions and answers done virtually like this. And that, the actual process is linked in that, in the guidance. And I apologize, I know that there are multiple kind of, nope, Krista.
Not that one? Sorry.
In the guidance document, right there?
Yep. Any additional questions for Carrie? All right. Thank you. I'm, sorry, every time I click back and forth, it takes me right back to the top. At Risk, Carrie, you're up again.
The next one's mine as well. So with At Risk, one of the pieces that actually worked very well in the spring was a cascading of our building-level teams and recognizing students who were not engaging even with our voluntary program. So in terms of teacher taking multiple steps to engage and then working with, you know, principal, FFO, moving on to home visits, but just having that graduated level of, if we're not able to, at a lower level, figure out why somebody's not engaging and problem solve, to move that to a more aggressive method of getting students involved. And one of the pieces is also to make sure that we're not only having scheduled opportunities for students, but possibly recording Zoom sessions that are taking place in person or specifically creating some shorter opportunities for students to engage in. So maybe they just need help with a particular topic versus a larger chunk of information. And so making sure that those are available to students so that they can access them when it is convenient for them to do so. So just certainly doing it a little bit differently if we're not in person. But several of the structures that we already have in place will transfer very nicely to a hybrid or an online model.
Any questions about equity?
I guess I'd just ask, like, what's your biggest concern right now in terms of these areas? And, and a, like, abbreviated school year or remote learning?
So I can speak personally. Judy, I think that my biggest concern is the fact that we don't, at least with Rolling Green, and it might be different with the rest of our schools, but not having that initial, you know, even if we had a week or two weeks with kids to really get them on their tech, remind them how all of that interface works. And so having students with, you know, new teachers, so people that they don't know. And when you, if you don't initially get that connection of, you know, do they respond to email? Do they respond to phone call? Of just really making sure that right away, we're on top of it so that if somebody's not connecting with us, that we figure out why so that we can, again, problem solve. Is it a connectivity issue? Did they not know how to get their Chromebook set up? Did they, did we miss them in getting internet access? Just all of those pieces. And then, you know, going back to the language issue, that just compounds the situation sometimes in trying to figure out why we haven't had that connection with somebody really to get them going. And so personally, that's my concern. I think that once, once we get the system going and we know that everybody's on and everybody kind of understands the schedule, I think then it becomes a lot easier. Our teacher, I mean, and it's, it's still going to be difficult, but our teachers know how to, when they have access to their kids, connect with them and make sure that excellent learning is happening.
Thank you.
So the last part of our equity return to learn addresses our gifted and talented learners. Julia Taylor, as you may know, was the person that worked most closely with the gifted and talented teachers. And so she worked with those teachers to develop this plan prior to her retirement. We're, we're passing the baton on to Ryan, but since he's still learning the system, I share that I've worked with this team, so I would share the overview. Really, we made some moves with respect to our, how we track our PEPs, which is our personalized education plan. So how those are built, developed, tracked, moved from a Google Doc kind of, one person owns that information, to being put into our EduClima system so that any teacher who serves that student or is connected in some way to that student via a class list or support, teachers has access to that personalized education plan. Our teachers, regardless of whether we're Our teachers, regardless of whether we're online, hybrid, or in-person, have a plan to develop those PEPs basically on the same schedule that they always have. They share those conferences, or excuse me, share those goals with parents that students have set at conference time. And then part of our challenge, as we're working to create schedules for those various learning environments, is, you know, onsite's a given, we know what that schedule would look like with respect to ELP teachers, is what they're called, extended learning program teachers, having access to their students. But in a hybrid or an online environment, making sure that when we set aside time for intervention or additional teaching or small group instruction, that we're also setting aside time for the ELP teachers to interact with their students, again, in small groups or on an individual basis. So we're working to develop those schedules and make sure that they have the same type of support that a student who needed additional support to meet grade level expectations would have. Is there any questions about that particular portion?
Do you anticipate fewer students taking advantage of partnership programs this year, like we have with DMAC or Central Academy?
So that's actually a question that Tim Carver and I have been working on. So DMAC has given us some guidance that, you know, really even in a remote learning environment, there shouldn't be any issues with students receiving credit, except in a few cases. And even in those cases, assuming we're not online the entire year, credit would not be a problem. So things like college chemistry, for example, where student, and we're actually transitioning college to AP anyway, because of the certification, you know, it's just impossible to find that type of a teacher. All of the career advantage programs that take place on the Ankeny campus, for example, for DMAC, have provisions in place for what they're doing to still allow students. Some of those include all online, for example. Some of them include a mix of online and in-person. Some of them are fully in-person, just with reduced class sizes. So Ankeny, or excuse me, DMAC has been really, really great about communicating with us, so we can still make sure that those kiddos have a comment, or have access to those classes.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, I'm gonna jump back into our agenda item for just a moment and stop sharing my screen, because I believe next is a different agenda item, so thank you.
Okay, so I don't have this up. Those were updates. So that was A, right?
And? Yes, that was, that was A. And then B, Steve, I would just turn it over to you, I guess, for the two items there. I think you're muted, Steve.
So I think, and I wasn't sure, Krista, if it was actually you or Denise, but I think the first thing the board was requesting was just a general overview again of the three delivery models. And the starting and beyond, again, our starting could be changed as we get down to 6G.
Okay, I can talk through the three delivery models again. And I'll use the document that Krista was just in, I'm opening that up on my screen right now. So up there at the top of that document that we shared on the, at the June 29 meeting, and then that, that we've been using, that we just were in to talk about the three plans, parts of our plan that we didn't get to last month. At the very top of that is a description of each delivery model. And so just like reading across that, a lot of the things are the same, right? Like, no matter what, this fall, attendance is mandatory. Kids have to participate, which is a very big difference from the spring. When we went into remote learning in the spring, that was voluntary. When we have remote learning in the fall, that's required. When we have hybrid, not only is the attendance at school mandatory on those two days a week that students would be at school, but on the three days a week that they're not at school, they also are required to engage online. Okay, so, so there's kind of the big difference from the spring. We're doing this, this will look entirely different when we're online, when we're forced to be in required continuous learning or remote online. The first and the preferable delivery model is onsite, just like school always is, though socially distanced and in masks and, and probably not moving to as many parts of the building as students are used to doing and all of, all of those things. Hybrid is what the board voted on at the last meeting, when they made the decision to go with hybrid model number two, which is the one where students are onsite for two days of the week, and they're in required continuous learning for three days a week. And we have half the kids onsite for two days and the other half of kids onsite for the, for another two days of the week. And then required continuous learning is remote learning, mostly online, though there are some students that we will need to provide some paper for. And I'm not, I think Krista can maybe speak to that more if there are questions about that. But that is, again, required learning. Schedules are still being developed. What that looks like exactly is not, is not fully laid out yet for families. But that's, that's essentially the three models. We prefer onsite, we think that Senate File 2310 demands that we're onsite, unless public health or concerns dictate us moving to another model.
This is Mark, if I could kind of break in, I do have a couple of questions about, and I think you're starting to hint at it, is on the hybrid, when on the days kids are at home or on the required continuous learning, as is recommended for Rolling Green right now. I think a lot of the confusion, or at least what I haven't seen yet, is what does that actually look like on the first day and then starting into it? Do we have any idea yet on something? I know we're working on communications to the public, but I think there's a lot of question there on what that actually looks like with kids behind the computers.
Yep, I could speak to that, Mark, if you'd like.
So I want to clarify before you answer that. You're asking about required continuous learning. Hybrid has kids coming onsite two days a week. And that's not the model that's proposed for Rolling Green that you're voting on later?
No, required continuous learning. We have kids under, under either the hybrid or the required continuous learning, where they are either fully at home or part of the time learning from home. And that's, I guess, where I'd like to hear some more information on what that looks like from a day-to-day basis.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that, Mark. This is Krista. So Heartland AEA, as well as other states, and actually Heartland AEA has shared these documents from other states, have different guidelines regarding how much screen time kids should actually have. And it's differentiated by the grades that kids are in. There is some variance in that. And so on Friday, we actually drafted up several different options of what a day-to-day-to-day schedule would look like, with some assumptions, right? Consistency is super important for families. So how can we make that schedule as consistent as possible from Monday to Tuesday to Wednesday to Thursday, you know, et cetera? The manageability of it. In other words, we know as educators that small group differentiated instruction combined with whole group instruction is what's best for kids. But is that manageable in an online environment? So is it manageable to hop on and off of Zoom while we take these breaks and other kids are working? So all that. Tomorrow, actually, meeting with the elementary principals to finalize what that will look like for elementary, since we've got Rolling Green really, really coming up. I'm anticipating in the next couple of weeks, we'll meet to finalize that for, in anticipation of our other schools starting in an online environment, though we're still holding out lots and lots and lots of hope that that won't be the case by August 25th, and we won't need that. So it'll just be kind of our contingency plan, if you will. But it does not look like, you know, 8:45 to 3:45 or 3:35 sitting in front of a computer. We know as adults, that's not good for us, so we know that's not good for our littles. You know, it ranges from everywhere from 70 minutes of online instruction up to 120 minutes of online instruction. And again, that's gonna be a combination of interactive online. I never realized how much I talked with my hands until I got in front of Zoom, so I'm sorry. But that's a combination of, you know, small group interaction with teachers, where we're sitting kind of across that virtual small table, and we're having some of that, to a whole group lesson that's like 15 minutes long, to potentially even some one-on-one time with teachers, a morning meeting where we're all engaging together. So trying to develop a schedule that we know is developmentally appropriate for kids, doesn't require too much screen time, but is structured enough and well-communicated enough that it's manageable for families, as manageable as can be, I suppose, is a better way to say that, considering we have lots and lots and lots of two-parent working families. We've talked about how to, you know, record things like that Zoom. So if a child is not able to get on for that whole group lesson at nine o'clock for reading, could they watch it later? At a time that is more convenient for their families. And we believe we have the capabilities to do that. We've talked about staggering office hours to try to be more responsive to working families. So all of that is what we're getting together tomorrow to finalize, and we'll be communicating that out with families.
Great, thanks.
You bet.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't get my computer unmuted. Just really quick, with the Senate File 2310, have we determined whether parents can choose to keep their kids home and do online learning yet? Did we get any? I can, I don't think we had an answer for that last meeting.
We don't, Ashley, but we're operating under the assumption that we can, and that is part of the information that we're collecting from families. So that survey has already gone out to parents to indicate, I believe by August 3rd, what their preference would be.
Okay, and then, so is that gonna be part of the conversation that you're having tomorrow? Since we'll have this as a backup plan to use with those kids if we, okay, perfect. I just wanted to double check myself.
It will be. I'm not sure that we'll have that completely nailed down tomorrow. Part of the issue is we're trying to match teachers who might have some underlying health conditions that really should necessitate them working in a different environment. We're trying to match those up with, like, families who want to keep their kiddos at home, so great big puzzle, right? And so for that reason, we've asked the families from Rolling Green, who've indicated that preference, that they would need to go on to the traditional calendar, which gives us a little bit more time to plan for that. So full online instruction for those that are choosing that wouldn't actually start until August 25th.
Krista, this is Sarah. I had two emails with this same question. So if they select the online option, will, what their confusion was, the parents that asked me, their confusion was, does that mean that they're just saying that if they were given the choice, they would opt out? Or are they, is that saying they will then be, be keeping, like, that's what they have selected? And that'll be their choice for the fall?
If parents, yeah, that's a great question, and I'm glad we're gonna be able to provide some clarity around that. So if parents select that option, what we're asking for is a one semester commitment. What that does is try to give us the, the most flexibility to match teachers to students, to still be able to offer all those classes that we want, you know, that we currently offer in person. But as we get closer to January, you know, let's, let's say a vaccine comes out or the virus is dying down. We've, we've achieved a certain level of immunity, whatever. We want families to be able to select to come back for that second semester. I did have a question from a Rolling Green family specifically about if they selected that option for their child, could they, is their spot still held at Rolling Green, if you will, absolutely, for second semester?
So if folks answered that they would choose online only on that survey, they're not locked in at this point. We haven't had an official kind of opt-in to this program yet.
No, we're asking that by August 3rd, you know, that, that we have that decision, if you will, by August 3rd. And then Carrie will be reaching out to all families with more information about what they might need. And, you know, we'll make sure too that those kiddos get a Chromebook, just like all of our other kiddos would, so they have access to that tool and technology.
And so for, for folks who are wondering, when they hear our three plans and what our understanding of legislation is, and then they see DMPS announce that they're gonna start off a certain way, are we to assume that they're operating under the assumption that there will be the need and a public health need at the start of school, so they're automatically moving to that second step? How, how would you address that confusion?
Well, that's a really good question, because again, I think if you read, if you read Senate File 2310, the, the exact language they use is the presumed method of instruction is in-person, and there have been no rules made, at least to my knowledge around that. So I think we're all kind of taking a chance right now in assuming other methods of instruction are available to us. You know, we finally just said we have to be able to, to collect this information, offer this option to our families. It's later in the agenda, but I know Mr. DeCryff will speak to his conversations with the Polk County Department of Public Health, who are, you know, making recommendations about what they won't mandate, of course, what we do, do, but making strong recommendations based on their knowledge as medical experts. So I, I don't know how to answer your question, Judy, I'm sorry. I think we're all just kind of taking a bit of a chance.
No, I think you're right. I didn't need to put you on the spot there. I just think there's confusion. And I think everyone's kind of, the phrase is like building the plane while we're flying it, right?
Are not comforting. Those are not comforting phrases to families, and I totally get that. Yep.
I'm interested, Steve and Mary Beth, any of the professional organizations that you are both a part of, if there has been any additional interpretation of that legislation? I think you're muted.
Sorry, muted myself. Again, we continually to ask, and we're getting no response. And I've told various groups that, you know, we were, it was critical for us to get some additional guidance. And the Metro Soups meeting, actually, it's a statewide one, but probably 70 or 80 soups are on it. That's one of our leading questions, because all we've heard for five months is local control, local decision. And again, without throwing Des Moines under the bus, we know they've made some decisions when there were recommendations differently, and they're a large organization. And there's times the rest of us wish we could just kind of jump on that bandwagon as well. But yet, the interpretation is, I know it's changed, because even a week and a half ago, I speak with my peers at least every other day, the six local districts. And a week and a half ago, we were all under the belief that, yes, we had to come back, because again, that was the presumed model. And since then, some of our fellow neighboring districts have loosened up and said, we were given choice, so we're gonna start with a hybrid. So again, we also realize there's strength in numbers, you know? We've all tried to stay on the same page. But then you have different desires of your community as well, and you try to judge that based on the data that you have. But to answer your question directly, it really puts us in a bind, and I'll address a little bit about that in just a brief overview on the very next item.
I have one last question, and if this isn't the right place. With respect to everything I just, we all just said about kind of not getting a lot of guidance, and we're all working very hard, and your team is working hard to fill in a lot of the holes that are given to us. I really appreciate that. What's keeping me up at night right now is that no matter, like, this hybrid program or required online learning, if, if we have a safety net for a family that comes to us and says, I, my kid, I have to work, and I cannot be there to provide instruction or even, you know, help my kid find his Chromebook, plug it in. I've got to provide childcare for my kid and cannot do this kind of remote learning. Will we have the kind of safety net for those students that we have for those who are opting to do complete online learning from the beginning? And, and maybe the answer is no. But I guess that's, that's like the hole that I see in all of these great plans, that there's that subset that is not gonna be served with this.
I guess I'll answer it, and I think you're correct, the answer is no. We cannot, with any of these plans, we realize none of them are complete, none of them are great answers, truthfully. None of them are plans we would go to, other than coming back to school onsite if we didn't have to. We cannot, we don't have the staffing, we don't have the facilities, the, I mean, to meet the needs of like, if, I mean, we'll talk daycare a couple of times in this. I mean, to meet the needs of like, if, I mean, we'll talk daycare a couple of times in this agenda tonight. We're in a real bind with that of, again, needing the safety requirements, having the numbers, still following DHS guidelines. Our plans are not complete to make it great for everyone.
But if I may, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Steve. Judy, I think to your point, though, that's part of what's driving our scheduling discussion too, is how can we be as flexible as possible, as responsive as possible? You know, even if that doesn't mean a daily contact, you know, with a teacher, because a student can only get online from five to seven o'clock at night. How can we, through not only, you know, instructional staff that might be willing, who knows, to do some flexing of office hours? Or our facilitators of family outreach, who work, you know, different schedules as well? Our administrators, you know, who are checking in with their kiddos too? How can we get our eyes on kids? And if that means it has to be done, you know, after hours, and it takes a village to do that, then I think that's our responsibility. To Carrie's point earlier, engaging as many kids as possible, and if they're not engaging, really finding out what those barriers are and helping to remove those barriers.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the next item, which is an alteration to the preschool return. Rolling Green, Ashley, are you on? Maybe unmute? I saw she was on here.
Yep.
Good. Hi.
Do you want me?
This is for the Rolling Green one, can you just really briefly summarize the recommendation?
All right, for this one, well, first off, embedded in here was a kind of more detailed plan of like modifications. So preschools included into the district return to learn plan. But there's also separate guidance that we received from the DE on June 29th, where there's modifications so that, to take in, like the plan, but making sure it's developmentally appropriate and following the guidance through preschool and childcare. But the recommendation for Rolling Green was to, we only currently have one classroom that is on the flex calendar at Rolling Green. And then we have, the other classrooms there are on the traditional calendar. Now, that started last year because of this, most of our classrooms that were at Olmsted moved there. The main purpose of the recommendation, I mean, there's several points, but the first thing, when we started looking into it, we were having quite a few families drop. Okay, so if I have families drop, but then I have other families, it doesn't give us much flexibility to move kids around if I have one that's just on the flex calendar. The other piece, so then, if I have them all on one calendar, I can move, spread them across classrooms, and that gives us more flexibility with staffing and spacing for students, especially in the preschool rooms, when we have early childhood special ed that requires a lot of space. And then we also have rest time, and we're talking about keeping cots like separated and things like that. It'll be a lot more helpful to have everyone on one calendar. The other piece of concern was, it's always kind of a concern having one teacher on a schedule by herself, because then she can't, I would have to have her do everything separate, real start, you know, at the beginning, and she wouldn't have a PLC or anyone to collaborate with until the traditional calendar would start. And so, and then we also have had conversations with that teacher, and she's also communicated that she's feeling more comfortable switching over so she can be a part of her PLC when we get started. I think another thing is, is I'm working on kind of a separate, the part that in my return plan there is more about like the health and safety measures and things like that. But now I'm really working on like the hybrid model, the continuous learning model, how that'll look for preschoolers, because that's a challenge. And so, that's another thing that we would like to make sure that I have all sections on one calendar, so we can keep the curriculum, the scope and sequence together, and that so we can, you know, provide enough support to guide, you know, the teachers in that process, but then also be able to help support the families and the students and those different models, especially for preschoolers where, you know, they're not very good options for, you know, preschoolers at all. So how do we do, how do we make it work the best that we can?
Do we have any questions?
Action item, this is a, we need to vote to approve, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Downs, I would move to approve the change to the Rolling Green preschool calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ashley. Stay on the line, we'll be talking again.
Real quick with that, it wasn't necessarily an action item. I just want to make sure that the board had a chance to read through that return plan, and that, you know, and some of that, it mentions like kind of the research and the, I think it'll probably come up later with the recommendation for preschoolers. We recommend masks, but not require. And I just want to stress that in preschool and early childhood special ed, we start having kids transition in at two years, nine months. And so, we really struggle with, based on research and that guidance, to have kids that young be required to wear a mask at all times. And so, I really want to emphasize that we're going to be focusing on more of the cohort mitigation strategies, keeping those kids together in their groups, not mixing with groups. And, you know, starting to teach, you know, social distancing, teaching the idea around wearing masks and recommending that, but not requiring it.
And Judy and Board, I apologize, but I want to make sure that it's clear, because I thought I heard Judy say, switching to the alternative calendar. Okay, very good. I'm the only one that heard it different, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So on item C, sorry, Ashley, you're up again. This is actually an information discussion item, not an action item.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
First, just to highlight the, kind of the reentry plan that I put together for before and after. I just really wanted to stress so that everyone is aware that if we're in person and we are offering before and after, that we currently, our guidance through DHS is based on summer, or like summer programming or childcare programs. It's really not focused on before and after school programming yet. Because I think that a lot, there's still, we keep getting, you know, just like a lot of things like that, we're going to get guidance, but we haven't received it yet. But, so currently, I wrote the plan based on what the current expectations are. So that will look different than some of the items like for returning to school. So for example, currently, if we have kids coming to before and after, we'll have to keep those groups sizes lower. And when they come in in the morning, they would have to follow the health screen, temperature checks, and those procedures, so that would look a little bit different than during the school day. And then if we had kids that came in the morning, or they didn't come in the morning, but then they came after school, then we'd have to do that with those kids in the afternoons too. So there's just some variation in what things would look like. But we're still going to try to also keep those kids cohorted as best as possible by grade levels, because some of the strategies that they're going to use, that we'd use during the school day, we still, when I start doing, you know, the different tracing and whatnot, there's still going to be some crossover from if they attended before and after school programming. So, and then the other part of that has to do with the big concerns on whether or not, I guess this is what, I mean, the whole, if we are in remote learning or the hybrid model, what that means for preschool and just terms of, you know, we're supported by parent fees. If we don't have programming, we're not going to be bringing in any revenue. And how sustainable we can be if we truly start going in and out of a variety of models throughout the year. So.
Mary Beth, will we, will we be reevaluating our budget? And do we have flexibility to make amendments or edits based on these, the kind of financial realities of what these plans are? I mean, I'm thinking about Ashley, and if we have, if we are in person for before and after care, she might need more staff to stay later, because they usually consolidate at the end of the day. But, you know, just those kind of things, will we be revisiting the budget? Or kind of what's our plan for adapting to those different financial changes?
Yes, that's a really good question. Ashley Myers and I have spoke about this already a few times. And we've also been in touch with Gary Sinclair, who helps review our financial information as well. And I've talked with Steve Bass. And we know that there are opportunities to go to the School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth, for lost revenue. This is an enterprise type fund, it's unique, it's not our general fund. So it has certain restrictions, but we are looking at that. And at the point when we have more of a plan, and we see how the dust really is going to settle, we certainly will move forward. But we've had discussions about this, and there's nothing, there's no discussions that I've had with any of those people that I mentioned that would hold us back from providing the services and the support that's needed.
Thank you.
I think the biggest dilemma is that, so if we're in person and we keep the numbers like to a certain level, like the in-person thing, we can figure that out, just in terms of being flexible spacing. The number of students that we can have in the program would be decreased as well. I'd say the biggest highlights for the concerns here are that, in that, say we start out online, and then we come back in a hybrid model. And so then I would have even half of the students that we'd have to have, be staffed for. But then if we transition into the all-in-person model, then that would double for staffing, right? And so, and then also going in and out of those models when we don't have, if we're virtual, you know, then we look into, and this is part of an item later too, but then having to furlough staff, because if they're virtual, we don't have anything for them to do, because they work directly with kids. And we're not bringing any funds, but then going back and forth of, okay, we need you now, now we don't, how that will, how we will be able to manage that long term. So those are lots of, lots of tough questions, and, you know, it's definitely a different circumstance, so.
Well, Ashley, thank you. Wish we had some solutions for you. This is messy. But I do think, hearing from Mary Beth, that there might be a chance to be able to help financially, possibly, and thinking creatively is kind of encouraging. So, and I'm hearing that there's some will on the board to look into that. Is that accurate? Great, thank you. Okay. So, communication plans D, this is another information item. Probably Dina?
Yeah, Catherine, I'm happy to just give a really brief overview of what is in the board information item there for communication. So really, I think one of our challenges is to take all of these details and all of this incredibly extensive planning and be able to communicate that in a way that our families are understanding, and we're setting the right expectations for what's to come. And so, one of the ways that we are setting expectations and working on getting our communications out is developing just a weekly communication that will be shared with families. And that's really the entire focus of that communication, will be return to learn. So what are maybe the top three or four topics that we, that we can either provide clarity on or provide more information on? I certainly appreciate when I receive information back from families, be it either on our Twitter or direct emails, or the board shares something with me that is, that's out there right now, that might be confusing and we might need to clarify. So I welcome that feedback, because that just helps us to continually improve how we're sharing that information, because ultimately, we want it to be understandable and for everyone to feel as comfortable as possible with our plans moving forward. Sorry, managing that participant list there as we talk. So families can expect to receive weekly communications, and we will be sending those out via email, via text, and phone calls. So if families aren't receiving those, please let us know. We will be sending those every Friday as we lead up to the school year. And those will also go out with translation, so we'll be able to reach all of our families. Another thing on here, and I'm just going to share my screen really quickly. Okay, so the other thing I just wanted to point out for our families and for everyone that is joining us this evening is that we have a return to learn section of our website, and the URL to get there is urbendaleschools.com/rtl, which of course stands for a return to learn. So here is just a really brief overview of the content that we have so far on this website, and I can share with you that it's only going to continue to grow and expand. So as you go to this website, and I will click Admit. As you go to this website and scroll down, a couple of areas I'd like to point out is this expandable section for notifications. And this is where, similar to how we were communicating this past spring with all of our coronavirus updates, we included all of our notifications on the coronavirus section of our site. And so we are going to do the same here. So all of our communications to our families that are coming out from the district will be shared within this notification section, and so you can click on those and review all of those. We will also be sharing all of our return to learn plans and different ways that we're communicating that information. I'm just going to click on quickly this dashboard view. So this is an example of how we are taking very complex information and creating a one-page summary for families. So say, for example, this is our dashboard view for all three of our instructional models. So we have onsite, we have hybrid, and we have online. And this is just meant to be a, so what is Urbendale doing for their return to learn plans? That's exactly what these kind of one-page summaries are meant to do, is to provide the most important information in just a real quick read. So we are starting those. We are also going to be developing these one-page summaries for what does onsite look like, what does hybrid look like? And of course, what does online or required continuous learning look like? So again, trying to take massive amounts of information and planning that our district leadership team has been doing pretty much nonstop, taking that information and putting it into a format that is easy to understand, clear, and that if there are any questions that we can certainly respond to and make adjustments to. So I am going to stop sharing my screen now. And the other thing that we're going to be working on as well, which is something that we already do for a lot of our crisis communications, which we found to be really valuable in those situations, which is to create different templates that we can reference when we need to transition to a different instructional model. We can have some communication templates that we can use, that we can reference in those times in order to communicate with our families and staff as quickly as possible. We'll also be developing. We'll also be developing these template communications for how do we inform others when, when and if we have a positive COVID-19 test result of a staff member or a student? What do those communications look like? And what are the most important next steps that we need to keep people informed of? So feel free to read through that Word document that we put in there that we included. And Denise, I know you have mentioned on here as well in terms of how we're communicating with staff.
Sure, I'll just give the little update on that. Since the first week in June, we have been sending an update weekly to the news board where all of our staff members can see that update. So each committee leader has been filling in a section of the update with work accomplished that week for that, for that section of the plan, major decisions that were made that week, and then linking in any guidance that was used to make those decisions. So before the last contract day for staff members was when we sent our first update out and told them to look for that update each Friday during the summer so that they would know the ones that were going off contract, would know what day, you know, that they probably want to get on their email and take a look on Friday or Saturday in order to have the best knowledge of the work that's been happening. We've also been using that so that we aren't sending out a bunch of extra emails throughout the week for people to have to try to catch up with. So like when we have a staff survey, which we've had to do a couple of those so far, we also send those out with the update on Friday so that it's just kind of a one-shot deal. I don't know, we will continue the Friday updates, but I would anticipate staff are going to start seeing more things in their inbox at other times during the week here soon just because that's the nature of getting close to being back to school like we always do. So there will be a few other things that crop up. But we've been trying to stay consistent and we've been able to stay consistent with that Friday update. And then, you know, here and there, we get some questions from that that then we, like, I usually respond and include the other district leadership team members so they can plug in holes. But we also use that to know, okay, so we're needing to make sure that we have this ready to share next week or this is what's on people's minds, that sort of thing.
Great, good work. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you guys for wanting and making, to communicate with everyone so easily and making it so accessible. I just, it's really amazing the work you guys have put in and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item E, which is Lauren's report about mitigation and health and safety practices.
Yeah.
Is this one going to be a vote?
It is, yeah, it is on.
That's what I thought.
It's the overall mitigation strategies, but you know, specifically the face mask portion of it. You know, the first thing that I would say is that certainly from a couple of weeks ago, the, the discussion that the board had was very helpful in not only kind of solidifying our thinking, but also getting that additional input for us to make some more plans, both with our Health and Safety Committee and then also with our, with the rest of our leaders. So within the mitigation strategies document, there are some things that we put regarding masks. And then there is the separate document, if you had a chance to look at it, regarding just face masks. Our recommendation is for it to be required for K-12 students as well as staff members and, and others that would be in the building. But to, for those that have a doctor's recommendation that they can't wear it, to have that accommodation available. And, and then just to work our way through that. We know, kind of going back to the, the person who commented publicly, we know that there are going to be difficulties with managing for numerous reasons. One being the young students and getting used to it. There's going to be a lot of teaching and learning that has to be done and then reiterated and happening on, you know, a regular basis. We know we're going to need our families, parents and guardians to really help promote this at home as well and, and help the kids come with a, a clean face mask every day. Our plan, if you looked at the document, is to purchase a cloth face mask for every student. Our plan, our plan as well is to purchase for all of our staff, a, we're hopeful anyway, a, a face mask that has a clear space on it so that kids can see it and, and that should be helpful. And, and we're going to move forward with that. So, so that is a big part of what is a part of the, the recommendation for approval, for sure. We also have worked or will continue working on, what does it, what does it look like when we're back in session and kids are wearing a mask for six, seven hours a day? Obviously, mask breaks are going to be needed. They have to come off for lunch, obviously. So there are ways, there are a lot of little details that are going to have to get worked out yet at the building level based on the particulars of the building, storage, things like that. And certainly there's going to be differences between what that looks like at the secondary level versus the elementary based on how much cohorting can happen, which is one of the main strategies that really across the system that we're going to be using to try to keep kids in smaller groups, generally speaking, which we anticipate should help us with the contact tracing part, which is going to be, we anticipate very complex. Just seeing the work of, of Dr. Watson that he's done with contact tracing and our, our student athletes and our, our coaches right now. It is, it's, I, I have, it's hard to put into words what that looks like in conjunction with Polk County Health and their assistance with it. And one big concern, quite honestly, as we get, get into that with, you know, hundreds more, thousands more students and staff, is just the scope of that work and how that can, how that can happen so that we can keep everybody as safe as possible. So that's one big one. In terms of some of the things about lunch recess and PE, we're still working through the details there. In general, at the elementary level, certainly, we're, we're looking for students eating classrooms where it's more co-horted. We're seeking some additional guidance regarding the, the degree of separation that we're, we need to try to do at the secondary level because it's just a little tougher with, of course, the goal too of trying to provide for our teachers the duty-free lunch because supervision becomes a very big issue. And, and we're really working hard on that right now. We're going to be meeting with Polk County Health again here this. That'll come up a little bit more in the rolling green item. But myself, Brendan Ness, the person at the high school and the Dr. Watson, we are the liaisons with Polk County Health right now. And.
There's no way. Can we pause for just a second, tell whoever that is to mute themselves? I don't want to miss what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep, could I ask if, if anyone is on the, participating on our Zoom and you are not a, a board member or speaking at this time, please mute yourself and also please turn your video off. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Dina. So they have, they have really, we've got a collaborative relationship with them right now. We hope that that continues, not only on the big things, which is a part of the rolling green recommendation, but on the little things as well and what aren't little things in terms of helping keep our kids and our staff members safe. So there's a lot more work to do there. You can see in terms of the temp checks, we're not planning to, to check the temps of our students, but certainly are going to be encouraging our families to monitor the health of their kids, just like we're going to ask our employees to monitor their health more than they probably ever have before in relation to coming, coming to work sick. You can see there that, and Ashley talked a little bit about it too, that there are different adventure time and before and after-school program requirements. So some of those, the DHS requirements are, are more stringent, quite honestly, than what we, what we might try to do with the rest of our population. And she'll be working very hard and it has been all along to follow those guidelines. One of the, one of the toughest things that we're trying to figure out as a Health and Safety Team, but really across our entire leadership team and, and teachers as well and, and staff, is that with our physical constraints, when we bring all kids back, it is virtually impossible to socially distance within that, within those parameters, which is why the, one of the main mitigating strategies is going to be wearing masks to help with that, knowing that we're not going to be as far apart as we want. Does that mean we're not trying to? No, it does not mean that. We will be working, you know, throughout the day to help our kids distance and, and for our staff to do that too.
Sorry, I, I've, I've got, thank you for all of this. Two, just quick question. When we say masks, are we going to allow for face shields as an interchangeable mask option? Or?
So the guidance we've gotten is that face shields are a good supplement to masks, but don't do the same thing that a mask does overall. Certainly, we're going to be getting face shields for our staff that want them as an addition. It is possible that we'll have kids in face shields as well. But I think the mask is, is really a key component to that too. In looking at buildings and classrooms that we put on that list, spreading out entrance and exit points, keeping kids' belongings separated as much as possible, which is really tough. A lot of these things are really tough to pull off, but efforts are going to be made. Bringing lunch from home, taking a sack lunch that can be thrown away versus reusable. We're working on disabling our drinking fountains and getting bottle, bottle filling stations available. Students bringing water bottles from home versus leaving them there and, and not washing them. And then, of course, good hand hygiene. And there's going to be a lot of teaching and learning that goes with that as well throughout the day. Individual supplies as much as possible and certainly working in our cohorts to even keep that individual where we can. And then I already mentioned lunch and recess. So specific to the masks, I guess I would say, are there any other questions regarding that? We also talked about it for our spectators, especially indoors. And, you know, there's more info, information to come regarding activities and what that's going to look like. We don't know exactly for sure, you know, what is going to be a go, what's not going to be a go. But once again, listening to the, the discussion of the board kind of led us to what that current recommendation is.
Lauren, I have a question. If a family, for whatever reason, says that their child is unable to wear a mask during school hours, what does it look like for that family to receive an exemption? What kind of documentation are we looking for?
I think we're looking for medical documentation more than anything else. And it's a great question. And, you know, we're walking into something here where we've never, of course, this is the case in almost everything, but where we've never done this before. So it's, it's a very good question and we're going to, not only with our kids, but with our staff too. It's interesting about the, the differences in, in how some districts, I think, are going to go about this. I heard just today that Des Moines is potentially going to, to tell folks, medical reason or not, that if they come to school, they have to have a mask on. In other words, you can't come if you don't have a mask. Which is, that's a whole nother level, I guess, of, of addressing that. But I think just where I would go first is medical, a medical exemption of some kind. And then the other one, the other one that we would have is, is for students that might have a disability that precludes them from being able to wear a mask as well.
Right, thank you, Lauren.
I had a quick question. Providing one mask is awesome. And I think with the hybrid model, it'll work well because it'll give parents time to wash them at home. Because I'm assuming we'll have the parents wash them to keep them sanitary.
Yes.
I muted myself, sorry. If we go back to the, or if we start with the full everybody in class method, is there, do we have the funding to supply more than one mask so that parents don't have to wash them every single night? That they can, I mean, it gives, it gives people a little bit more room to work with that?
Yeah, we, we've talked about this. There is, there is a, a scale of expense that will go with this because we're looking at probably for students, 5,000 masks, which we're looking at about $1.75 apiece. And the other thing we talked about as a Health and Safety Team was eliciting volunteers from the PTOs and, and the connections that they have at each building that they have in the community, where we could maybe get volunteers that, folks that just love sewing and have already been making a lot of masks to, to help support that. Maybe where there's some donations. But I, I, I understand what you're saying, Ashley, and, and we landed at one for now.
No, I totally get it. I was just thinking more of like, oh man, that's a lot of laundry.
And, and we know that for some, it's, it's going to be tough to, to make that happen even in terms of laundering. And while, of course, you know, best practice is in really hot water in your washing machine, but I think even hand washing and encouraging that for some families might be an alternative too that we have to recommend.
Thank you. I am not associated with masks, but I had one other question in regards to mitigation strategies in general. I was on the call with the University of Iowa College of Public Health forum thing that they did earlier last week. And they said one of the biggest areas that are going to be concerning for all buildings is going to be restrooms and how to space kids out appropriately in those areas. Even with masks and hand washing and everything else, just for social distancing purposes, have we put any thought? Have we put enough thought into that specific area since it was, it was specifically mentioned during this thing with a bunch of the public health folks? So I just.
I will say this, we, we have talked about it and a lot of it's because of the variation we have between buildings and accessibility to bathrooms and how many there are. You know, in our high school, we've got a lot, of course, it's a bigger building too, but a lot of bathrooms. And some of our smallest elementaries, there's not very many and the spaces are just overall more enclosed. And they're going to have to, they're going to have to work hard to schedule so that kids can get there when they need to, but yet keep some distance as well. So I mean, that's one of many of the problems, especially in our smallest buildings.
My questions, and this is, this report, the level of specificity, I think, is what we really needed. And I appreciate that so much, thank you. Have you identified and secured a vendor for the masks?
We're right in the midst of that right now and it's a priority this week actually to move forward. So we've identified a few options and yeah, we're, we're prepared to move forward yet here real soon.
Thank you. Does this require a vote to approve this plan?
Yes.
Then I would move to approve the plan presented.
I have a second.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call on this one? Mary Beth?
We can do that. Hauser?
Yes.
Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
There Geiser?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Sarah Schmitz?
Yes.
Hey, that passed unanimously.
Yes. And I would just tell you that someone at my house is watching Waukesha's board meeting and they just did the same thing. So just for, we are not alone.
Sounds like smart people.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to F, which is a recommendation about premium pay. Steve, you want to talk about this?
Certainly, just briefly, you know, the board had passed to date where we had premium pay for people who were considered more at risk whenever we were basically not onsite, which again, right now, we don't have many people. And so we don't have anybody there except our food and nutrition are still considered premium pay because they're a little more at risk when they're out in the public. So I was just trying to paint the picture. And again, the, I felt the best way to make a decision and requesting the board's report is by following our learning models. It seemed to make sense that naturally if we are onsite, that means again, as provided we wear the proper PPE, that really no one is more at risk than anyone else because we're all onsite. But yet if we're in the, one of the other two models, then we still would have various people who we might consider a little more at risk. And so my recommendation is that I still have the freedom to decide based on how much they're out in the public.
Would you, when you make that determination, will you let us know?
Like on a case-by-case, or?
No, I guess I would say, so like, as we make the decisions to transfer from one model of learning to another, you would include in that announcement what that means is going to be our premium pay.
I, I can, yes. And again, there may be various situations that come up in there that would change, and I can let you know that as well.
Because I, I would vote to approve, I would move to approve the extension of the premium pay policy.
I have a second.
Oh, I'll second it. I didn't realize we're taking a full vote, sorry.
Okay, on this one, I think we can do a I. All in favor? I?
I.
I.
Close, same sign. It's unanimous. Okay. So we're going to go to the Rolling Green proposal. There are a number of people who have requested to be able to speak. And so I think we'll start out with Olivia. Are you online, Olivia?
Catherine? This is Janine Choudry. Are you ready for this portion?
Yes, but I was going to take Olivia, who's a fifth grader. If she's on.
I think she's on. I heard her in the background.
I can see her. She's on.
Okay. Olivia, could you tell us your full name and where you live? We can barely hear you. Olivia, we can barely hear you. Can you get closer to your microphone? Can you get closer to your microphone?
I'm Olivia. I live at 4130.
Sure, let's try this. Oh, this is my mom's phone. Can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm a fifth grader at Green. I'm here to discuss the student perspective of which this decision rolling green school is very important to all because it provides structure and consistency, which is good for kids. There are so many fun things at school and adventure time. We draw and make friends not our age. And when we were learning, we have activity that we will miss during online school. We will miss other things as well. Bank is one of them. In bank, you learn how to count money. You also learn skills because of all people interaction. And another thing is ambassador. I get to help the younger kids open their milks, and I help them. It fills me up with pride when I do things like this. Many kids with working parents like mine know that it is a hassle when you need something and they're working. So many kids knows the struggles, the struggle is real. Social interaction is one of the most important valuable life skills, not over the computer. Every single job, if you wanted, if you're not a good communicator, you probably won't get the job. It all goes back to the interaction in elementary, middle, and high school. And why? Why have sports gone on when I can't learn? Why are sports going when learning in the classroom is not an option? Why is Des Moines, West Des Moines, and all the private schools and the universities go when we can't go? I know we are uniquely Urbandale, but in this case, being unique is not being, is not a good idea. Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world. Nelson Mandela. So why not in the classroom? Thanks for listening and taking this into consideration.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Okay, Janine, you're up.
Thank you, Olivia. Well said.
Tell us your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Janine Choudry. I'm the Urbandale Middle School Extended Learning Program teacher, as well as the co-president of the Urbandale Education Association. I live at 9918 Elto Strive here in Urbandale. Thank you, Superintendent Mr. Bass and the board for the space in tonight's board meeting. On behalf of the UEA, we are in support of the administration and community as we create our return to learn. The following UEA members from Rolling Green will make statements on behalf of Rolling Green teachers.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Tremmel, newly Lindsay Williams. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Rolling Green and starting my sixth year of teaching this year. While I don't yet have kids of my own, I do have 20 or more students every year that I consider mine and call my, call them my kids. I've thought extensively about all of our Rolling Green kids and families and what this school year will be like for all of us during this pandemic. In addition, I, like many others, also worry and think about my own family, including my dad, who had a major brain surgery this year, which puts him at risk for COVID. Like all of you, I've been looking forward to returning to school and mostly to seeing my students. But there's a lot to consider before we go back. We feel our administration has extended themselves in a way that has gone, has gone above and beyond. Lauren DeCrey has made himself available to listen and meet with teachers. Danielle Wilson has stepped up to be Rolling Green's interim principal at our building, and this has been so important. Not only does she take on the extensive list of principal responsibilities, she's also leading the first school to open in the state, not just for elementary, but also for preschool, which has a completely different operating, operating procedure, as we talked about before. Rolling Green is one of just two year-round schools in the whole state of Iowa. As a principal, Danielle will wear many hats and will do all of this while raising her own two young children. She has handled all of this with grace and compassion. Administration is working so hard to rewrite this world of education to fit the pandemic model, resulting in a long-term learning model rather than up, an opening a school and having to close it again, all due to infection. That is not what any of us want.
Hi, my name is Allison Smith. This will be my seventh year of teaching and my third year as a reading teacher at Rolling Green. I work with small groups of students from multiple classrooms. I love my job, and I miss my students. That said, I want to return to work safely. Not only am I a teacher, I'm also a parent. I have a child going into first grade in West Des Moines, and I, like many of you, am lying awake at night, wondering how I will continue to do my own job while ensuring that my son gets a first-grade education in a safe environment. How will I balance it all? None of this is ideal, and the challenges we face are monumental. I never thought I would be weighing the risks of in-person school during a pandemic against the challenges of online education for both myself or my child. I'm heartbroken over my son and your children possibly not getting a normal elementary experience with birthday treats and science projects. Yet I'm also lying awake, thinking about what would happen if any one of us were exposed to COVID at school. I think about how that would affect my mother. She is a cancer survivor. She's high-risk, and she's recently widowed. So I can't isolate from her right now. She's also my backup childcare. I'm not the only person on our staff with a high-risk family member. I'm telling you this because these are the reasons we need your support. We need to consider the situation from all perspectives, and we're asking you to act now to create a detailed plan to responsibly move forward for the health and safety of Rolling Green families, Rolling Green staff, and our families, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
My name is Danielle Miles, and I have been teaching first grade at Rolling Green for the past seven years. Rolling Green's ambition is to provide learning using a non-traditional calendar. This makes our school a choice for all Urbandale families and draws in students from surrounding communities as well. As a staff, we recognize that the students and families at Rolling Green have made this choice, and we are grateful for the opportunity to play a significant role in each child's education. We focus heavily on project-based learning and hands-on instruction, and emphasize collaboration and community. Our building reflects this with an open building concept. This configuration of open classrooms is an additional hurdle when planning safe, long-term instruction during a pandemic.
My name is Christina. Rolling Green for seven years, all in third grade. In this past year, I taught 25 students in my classroom. My classroom measures 25 and a half feet by 18 and three quarters feet. That leaves approximately 19 feet, square feet, per student when there's absolutely no furniture in the classroom. As Danielle just mentioned, if you've visited Rolling Green in the past, you may know that we have an open classroom model. So for my room, for example, is open to three other classrooms. Over the past few weeks, I have attempted many times to organize my classroom in such a way to allow for as much social distancing as possible. The World Health Organization's recommendations are three feet between two people or nine square feet per child. Realistically, even with the aforementioned measurements, adding any furniture to my classroom would make creating a safe environment nearly impossible for 100% of students returning to school. I will continue to work with my colleagues to problem-solve ways to keep contact to a minimum. While this is overwhelming for me, I can't even imagine how Karen Akers and Jensen teachers are doing this, as they've also absorbed some of Olmsted's students' population and have much higher numbers of students, as well as additional staff, in their classrooms. While there will be an intense need for additional instructional design support for remote learning, I believe that the safety of children and adults is far more important. As educators, we know that academics can only be learned once a child's physiological and safety needs are met. It is vital for us to create a learning environment that supports this knowledge. It will be a challenge, but I am confident that this is something that our staff administration will work hard at over the next eight business days prior to our students returning to learn via the safest and most consistent model possible, remote learning. Thank you.
My name is Anna Freilich, and I have a 17-year-old daughter and a 24-year-old daughter and a three-year-old grandson. My husband and grandson have health conditions that put them in the high-risk category, so coming back to school without safety measures in place is very concerning for me. So I appreciate your, your hard work in making sure that we can all return safely. I've been teaching K-5 special education at Rolling Green for nine years, and this will be my 10th year at Rolling Green. I love my students. I love teaching, and I love my family, and I miss my students, and I'm very much looking forward to returning to school when it's safe for us to do so. Urbandale began the work of social emotional learning with the book Study All Learning is Social-Emotional last year. This year, we will use the knowledge to identify and address our students' emotional needs, perhaps more than we have considered those things in the past, as we expect students to have some different anxieties surfacing concerning COVID-19. We want to be prepared to come back together in a way that honors the fact that many children have not been around anyone other than their immediate family for many months. And with that comes emotions they will need help processing as we adjust to a new normal at home, at school, and in our communities. Stable and safe learning environment is one that should be planned for in weeks and in months, rather than just a few days, as we begin to look at returning to learning at Rolling Green.
Hi, my name is Danielle Neary, and I am a fourth grade teacher at Rolling Green. I myself have a four-month-old son who was born March 13th, just at the beginning of our shutdown. He spent time in the NICU due to breathing issues and an infection. I also have elderly parents, both with health conditions that put them at high risk, and they will be part of my childcare plan going forward at work. I've taught for eight years, all of which have been at Rolling Green, six years teaching second grade and going into my third year teaching fourth grade. Rolling Green teachers are members of our community. We serve this community, and we're ready to put the work into lessons that result in learning how to read, hold a pencil, solve math problems, and be a friend. We long to design, plan, and implement these with our students. We need our leadership to provide us with a safe and consistent platform in which to do this. As COVID-19 numbers continue to rise and considering sports and summer school evidence in past weeks, we know that the first day of school will not, and ultimately cannot, be the same as it was last year. We are ready to blaze new trails in providing instruction. We need support for a platform in which to do this safely, long-term, and we need to be able to pivot quickly to respond to the ever-changing conditions. These are the reasons why we support our administration's recommendations for a safe and stable online start at Rolling Green. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Janine, for coordinating that.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, Lauren?
Okay, so I'll just speak into a little bit the process that we went through with Polk County Health, and it's been fairly recent. And one of the things that we were seeking probably sooner than, well, really sooner than any other district, was what metrics we and they would be looking at together in regards to the guidance that we know we're going to be collaborating with them on. And if you looked at the, the very recent guidance that they gave us, you can see, and I put some of that in the details, of how they're going to be working with us. So last week, on Thursday, we had that discussion with Polk County Health officials. And in looking at the CDC language, they speak of substantial community transmission of the virus, mild and moderate, and then none. We kind of went into the meeting thinking mild, moderate, and substantial, and our thinking was just looking at the data of the rolling averages that we see coming out of Polk County, which we call our community, that it was substantial community spread at this point. Polk County Health officials have the same thought process on that. And so our thinking and their thinking was very much in line together, and this is, once again, using the CDC language. Based on that, that's where this recommendation really has come out of, kind of from the big picture. I know that there's a lot of questions that go along with, you know, how long and what is going to change this, and, and when, when are we potentially going to get back? And one of the things that, that we talked with them about was, and that they talked with us about, is looking at the trend data and seeing cases overall go up or wanting to see them, of course, go down to feel safer about going back into our environments. And right now, unfortunately, the trend data is going up. And I think that's what some of their modeling, at least that they referenced briefly, is showing as well, which is, is, it's, you know, there's lots of words that go with that, because as you heard our teachers just share in, in very detailed ways, we all want to get back with kids. I don't think there's anybody that's probably on this, on this meeting that doesn't want that. But yet, we were thinking about the health and the safety of, of all of our stakeholders that come into our buildings, our kids, our staff, our associates, our, everybody. So we plan to continue that collaborative relationship with Polk County, and, and right now, thankfully, we have a little bit more of their attention because we're the, nobody else is starting yet, because their, their plan really is to collaborate with all districts in Polk County in this way. And so we're meeting again with them this week to talk about some more of the details and, and probably talk about more of the contact tracing, which is a big piece of how they're going to be, how they are currently supporting us, and how they're going to be supporting us in the future, and then helping us make decisions about, once we do get back, if we have cases in buildings, what that looks like in terms of the degree of quarantine that's needed, whether a building needs to be shut down or not, whether it's the whole district, just lots of those things are going to be really individual situations, but that are going to impact a lot of people. And, and that is the case right now in what we've seen with the sports, and that's, you know, like 100 athletes or so and 10 to 20 coaches. So not nearly on the scope of what we're looking at when we start back with all of our kids. our kids. So we don't know exactly, I can't say right today, like it's going to be, we're going to have a decision on two weeks after the July 23 or not. I just know that one of the things that they talked in detail about was wanting to see 14 days of decrease and a decreasing trend, kind of like what was talked about way, way back when, when they were talking about kind of the overall opening up of the economy and such. So I think that's going to be part of it, as well as those other metrics that I listed in the details around hospitalizations and a number of different things, testing, for instance, and that still looks to be a problem because if it takes four, five, six, seven days to get tests back, it doesn't help us very much in terms of what the virus is doing. One of the things that they really wanted to have from us, even in a remote scenario, was our kids giving attendance about who's sick and who's not, because that could tell a bit of a story about what community transmission might look like, even when kids are home, if it is remote learning. So there are a lot of things that they'll be looking at to help us make these decisions going forward. Like I mentioned earlier, Brenda Ness, the UHS nurse, myself, and Dr. Watson are, right now, our liaisons with Polk County Health. Brenda has a good relationship with many of the folks that work there. Bella's been working very closely with them in the last month regarding contact tracing, and then in my role of health and safety, as well as the district leadership team. So we're hoping to build on that collaborative relationship as we work to, together to get our kids back to school when we see it as safe.
Thank you, Lauren. I moved to approve the proposal for the instructional delivery model for Rolling Green.
Stacy Anderson, second.
Okay, we probably need to do a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote. Sarah Schmitz?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah Geiser?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
That passed unanimously.
I want to thank you, Lauren. I know that this has been exhausting, and I know it will continue to be, and thank publicly Brenda and Dr. Watson, Brenda Ness and Dr. Watson, for all the work they've put in. It's an incredible burden, and you've done a very good job. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item H.
Item is probably, probably one of the most challenging ones, I think, that the board will have to take. And we're at a point where we're a little bit different than the place where we were last year, where people had already started work. I know, talking with the fellow districts, this is a consideration that every district is looking at. If we do not return to school, as with Rolling Green, they'll be the first people who would be affected by this, if the board were to do it, but as well as Adventure Time employees. But the recommendation is to place people whose roles and responsibilities cannot be fulfilled, and again, many still can. Just because we're onsite or not onsite doesn't mean that some of our support staff cannot do some, at least some of their work, but there are people that cannot. And so the recommendation is to place those employees on furloughs. The difference, again, between a furlough and a just layoff is furloughs, A, guarantee their positions back, and also they would retain, if they have benefits such as insurance, they would retain those while they're on furlough as well. The biggest challenge, of course, will be if we shift between models. You know, there'll be on furloughs, off furloughs, on. Those are, again, we just don't have a crystal ball for that, and, you know, as far as we know, we could possibly not return the entire school year, school year. So again, very tough decisions to make, but it was my job to bring it to the board for consideration and to make a recommendation.
If not, may I have a motion?
I, sorry, I'm battling a five-year-old. I guess before, this is a tough one. So like, are we talking about mostly part-time employees?
It's really probably more role-specific. If they're, if we can't meet the needs of, let's say, associates working with students, if we can't have them at school, and that's something we have looked into, or a general ed, they would not fulfill those needs, again, because we're not at school, whether, you know, even if we're onsite or the hybrid, we're at least at school part of the time. But when we're not there, people just, they can, it's not their fault, but they just can't fulfill their roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm struggling and where I was thinking this over. I'm a little unsure kind of what the list is consisting of currently, and it's tough for me to make a recommendation either way. You've identified the positions and have lists, Steve?
Again, I gave you some ideas of those who I think would be able to work, again, remotely, like, you know, we still need secretaries, or at least probably part-time when you're in, not at school all the time. The students, you have to look at, maybe their time would be reduced. Again, we don't have all the roles and responsibilities of everyone. Cooks would probably depend on if we're, we will apply to still do some meals. But again, probably more the associates that, again, if they're not working with students, then they're probably, probably more the main group that it would affect, as well as, again, the Adventure Time would affect them, because if they're not with students, then their services are not being utilized.
So if there was a classroom that was able to utilize associates, if needed to utilize associates in a remote capacity, I mean, in that case, we would not, right, make that decision because those staff members are working?
Yes, that's correct. If we can get them to work, and again, within our safety guidelines, then, then, again, that would meet the kids' needs as well as keep the staff employed.
And then, under this circumstance, they would be able to collect unemployment and retain benefits?
Well, again, if they work at all, or if they're, if they're reduced or not working, then they can, then they would put in.
I'm saying if they're furloughed, retain benefits and be able to collect unemployment in that temporary status?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is, and this is kind of what would, what we would be voting on, is the ability to do that if needed, right? And it would be on a case-by-case basis, based on the class of employees?
Again, Rolling Green employees and Adventure Time who work there would be the first ones affected.
That's the reason why it's before us tonight, because we have Rolling Green.
The, the other, the other piece that you'd be voting on is the, the retaining of the health, of benefits, that that would continue even if furloughs were, were needed.
And I want to stress that, just so you're aware, this would impact the Adventure Time sixteen leaders this week, because they're on, they started July 1st, and now that Rolling Green's not going to be in person, that's what we're trying to figure out to do next.
I guess the next question I would have is if we already identified physicians and staff with, with associates and, and everything else, turning to you, Mary Beth, what is, what is the costs based on this decision at this point?
Well, we certainly have options with regard to unemployment and using our management fund and just the resources that we have available. Again, in talking with Ashley, and I talked with Lauren and Steve, we're, financially, we're supportive of whatever the board decides.
And I think the hardest question is, we just don't know the longevity.
And until we have all of our students' IEP meetings, we, we don't have a strong number of knowing what students, even when we're online, we're not saying that we wouldn't use our associates. So we can't say that we would furlough all of our associates. So I just want to be really clear with that.
And I guess that's why, I appreciate that, Shauna, that helped. I think that's why I have a little reticence right now in making any sort of decision, and I, I guess I'd welcome some other board members weighing in on this. If we don't make a decision, that's, that's one thing, and we can revisit it later on down the line, if we have a little bit more understanding of longevity, and that's what we're all looking for right now, is that we don't have much information as far as what the longevity is. And so I guess I'm not entirely inclined to, to support that at this point, but like I said, I'd like to hear from other board members.
We have, our next board meeting is August 13. That obviously is, you know, a little less than two weeks before school actually starts. So there is a little bit of room. I don't know if it's possible to compromise to actually cover those, those salaries until we get to that point. I don't, I don't know whether that's workable.
We have a special meeting in there where we could add something, right? We have a, we have a special meeting in the meantime, where if we needed to vote on something, we could, right?
We could. It would probably be after we're done, like 8:30, but we could.
Personally, I would prefer to wait. Oh, sorry, Sarah, what?
No, I was just, I have been, you know, in speaking with a couple other summer programs, I do think that that is, I think they are, I mean, it wouldn't be abnormal for us to start the furlough process. Is that kind of what you would understand, Steve, that that is happening more frequently now, correct?
I would say, based on, because we're starting the year and people have not started yet, again, it's, it's really up to the board if you want to continue paying people. Again, I don't know if that information will ever have the true information of knowing the end result is the real challenge.
But we don't even have the data on, on the financial savings right now, because we don't know the usage of staff, and that, that's where, I don't know that I can make a fully informed decision at this point.
And I respect what the board says, but again, it's not, it's not a savings, it's just, again.
And if I said savings, I'm saying financial impact that, that we have with this, and we're talking about, we don't know, based even on what Shauna said, is, we don't know at this point who's going to be needed and where.
Yeah, just to speak about what we know right now, the only thing we know for sure is that Rolling Green is not starting on time. So the, the number-one impact there is the, in terms of the before and after-school care, the team leads that we're going to provide programming for the kids that would start then. So that is the first group of people that would be impacted, and those are full-time employees that have, you know, 12-month employees that start their planning, and they have on July 1. And that's why we're, we're up against that right now in regards to that particular group.
I guess, I think where my hesitation is now is if we start this process, like with Ashley's team, and we lose them, and we end up needing to scale back up, it's going to delay this process, where if we could go ahead and pay for our staff for the next, you know, however, let's say, four weeks, until we have a better idea of the longevity of everything, then we're not dealing with the fact that we can open up, but we don't have the staff for it. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
I would agree, and that's my hesitation with, all right, we have a special situation with Rolling Green, but then we're going to look at still trying to open up all the other schools. And so why are we, I understand it is, it is a cost to us right now, but it's minimal, given it's a school and some staff right now, where let's get a little bit more information and make that decision in a month. So I'm on the same lines as with you, Judy.
And I think, I mean, to be clear, we're not going to get through this without having to do this at some point.
No.
Like, yeah, Judy, that's what I want to, like, I think at some point, we are going to have to settle ourselves with the idea that we're going to have to make some of these tough decisions, because I don't, I certainly don't want to furlough staff, but we could be up and down with this all, you know, throughout the entire year. So I'm fine with waiting, if, if that's what you guys want to do, but I do think at some point, we probably will have to make this decision. Sorry, my daughter doesn't like the decision either.
I, I would say that I would prefer to wait just a little bit more, so we know what we're doing with the rest of the building, so that we can have a little bit of a better handle on what, what, what the full impact of this decision will be, because, I mean, in two, two to four weeks, we'll have a much clearer view of where we start. And then at that point, if we have to actually start the process of furloughing people, I think it'll be a slightly easier, more informed decision.
So is this a motion, a motion to table this and add it to the August meeting agenda? Is that appropriate?
I'd second that motion.
Should we, can I just ask real quick, should we add it to the special, the July 28?
We can, we can possibly revisit it.
Okay.
If we have better information, I will put it on the agenda. I'd also like to hear from Stacy and Sarah, I mean, Stacy and Brianna.
I just think it's, I, I agree. I think waiting is wise. I think the process will be streamlined in four weeks. We're dealing with so many other moving parts right now. I don't think another moving piece should be furloughing. I think we need to figure out what we need, and I'm fine with a minimal expenditure of keeping people retained as staff members.
Brianna?
Yeah, I think I would also like to wait as well. I think that, given the fact that it's just a few days away, and also that those staff members will still be probably planning and working and thinking about what, what's going to happen in the future, and, you know, if we can wait, even I would recommend that August meeting, we might have a better idea of what is happening in the rest of the district by then, and then we might have some more informed decisions and have more information. You know, that gives us some time to see, you know, what our cases look like in Polk County, and we might have a better idea of if this is going to be necessary or not.
And I would say that we would be much more likely to actually have numbers and position, positions, I would say, that would need to be furloughed at that point that we don't necessarily have now. And so, Mark, if you want to go ahead and make that motion, or whoever.
I think Judy made the motion, and I seconded it, to table till the August 13th meeting.
Sure. Okay, we have a roll call?
Yes. Hauser?
Yes.
Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Sarah Geiser?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah Schmitz?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the discussion, everybody. This is going to be a tough one. Okay, move on to the recommendation for Studer Survey Services. Any questions, clarifications? If not, may I have a motion?
Downs moved to approve.
Second. Smith.
Okay. I believe on this one, we can do, all of in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All opposed, same sign. Okay, that was unanimous, Mary Beth. If we can move on to Jay, that it would be approving the student handbook revisions for the next school year. Any clarifications or questions on that?
I had just a-
I had just a few questions. Um, the elementary and high school ones make a lot more mention of hygienic, especially with the middle school with masks or the high school with masks where the middle school doesn't. Are we going to match those languages, the verbiage across the two handbooks? If you look at the high school one, it says like, you can't wear hats, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then they said mask unless it's hygienic reasons. But it doesn't say that in the middle school. Are we going to match those?
Yeah, and I don't know the specifics. They have various representation on this and I, I don't know if Elise is on here. I think she's been heading it up, but I think that the high school and middle school principals have had that conversation about being the same. It seems to be much more of an issue at the high school than it does at the elementary, if I remember correctly.
And if I could, this is.
Or so maybe Tim, you can help. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah. And so the high school, the mask we're talking about there is related to like Halloween, you know, costume type of masks. Which is why we felt obviously under the current health condition is why we were planning for, that's why we referenced the hygienic.
Ashley, this is Krista. I'd be happy to reach out to the middle school principal and make sure that that language is consistent. Among the two, they operate in separate committees. So I think that's, I think the hygienic purposes would add clarity and we can do that for sure.
Yeah, I just figured like it, it was so much clearer in the high school and I was like, oh, this is such an easy like copy paste for that. And then the other question I had just had to do with the, I, I know at the end of this whole thing, it said that we went back through to change his slash her, his or her, that language to they. But then there was an example where the edit for the elementary school still contained the, I gotta open it, sorry. Can my computer a second for the?
Found the place where I missed it, I could have missed it. So I can go back through and, and get that.
It was specifically where it says throughout, we did the thing. So I was like, oh, that's awesome. But then in the example of what, in like the hot, in the bold where it said what we're changing it to, it still said his or her for page 28 in the lost and found. And I just wanted to say, oh, I just was curious.
Golden.
Yeah. Other than that, I think, I think I'm, I'm just so jazzed that we're making the, the, the pronouns more gender inclusive and it just makes me really happy. So thank you.
Yeah, me too. I'll make sure that I got that one taken care of.
Thanks.
Yeah.
The, the only other question I had about the changes and it is addressed in there, but with the attendance policy, are we just kind of considering? I mean, is there a plan for just not addressing attendance or how attendance will be addressed, I guess, this year with the concern of COVID?
It seems, it seems specific in the, I guess we're addressing it in the handbook. So I feel like, do we need to say that we're not addressing it or is there another?
We are addressing attendance. So regardless of which model we are operating in, there will be attendance taken every day. So there either will be an attendance task or a participation in a meeting to make sure that we are engaging with our students.
No, I understand that, Carrie, I guess. But my concern when I was reading it is for those families that choose not to have their students, I guess, I don't know. I just feel like attendance is a, like a, I don't know, like kind of a difficult. I didn't like the way it was, I guess, worded because when you look at 10 absences and then, you know, for some of our most vulnerable families, if then juvenile, if, if attendance, you know, if they're, they're, the judicial system is brought into the process through truancy, I think, I don't know. I just think it's a, are we going to give leniency, I guess, is what my question is this year.
So we'll work through the problem solving process, reaching out to families, working with them to figure out what their barriers are for them to be engaging with the instruction individualized with families, depending on what those issues are. So yes, there would be, so for instance, like Krista talked about earlier, that if we know that kids can't get on when we would normally be taking attendance for say morning meeting, that if they're able to watch that video at, between five and seven was the example given when parents are home to be able to assist with that, that we would be able to have them complete a, yep, I watched the video or yep, I, you know, participated in this way to be able to give them attendance.
Right. But it still leaves if, if, if it's 10 days and, and we haven't heard from a family and then we do, you know, on day 12, find out that they were having issues, we still have given.
Yeah, I think that that's not giving credit to our staff members and their teams. They're absolutely going reaching out to families and would not just say, oh.
Carrie, I, I'm not, I'm not, not giving, I'm not, not giving credit to staff members. I do this, I, I essentially do the same job and I know that there have been families that's been challenging to get in touch with at times, but I don't have, I mean, but it's, so I, I guess I'm concerned that if we say 10 days, that 10 days is not a number that, I don't want families, especially, I don't want any families involved with truancy during, I guess, during the time of COVID unless we know for sure. So I don't, I just don't like having a hard, number set, but that's just, you know, I'm, I'm just one voice on, on the board. So that's just, I wanted to state that and make it clear that I, I don't like us going into this school year, having a number set in case it becomes a hardship on families.
I think that, that absolutely the staff is going to work with our families and figure out why there is an attendance issue and work to resolve that.
I think there's probably a lot of questions and further further exploration of how to track the attendance and what that's even going to look like. I think Sarah bringing up a valid concern on the fact that everything is probably going to have to be more flexible and that our utmost concern is to try to make sure that we keep track of all of our little and big people and try our best to make this as normal as possible. But I think Sarah's question is and I would hope that would be taken into consideration as the administrators in the future's move forward to try to keep track of all of our people.
Absolutely. Yeah. I just want flexibility in, in those.
And I think. So raising that concern is valid. Okay. If there are no other questions, may we have a motion to approve these?
I just remembered one more question I have. I'm sorry, everybody. I know I take too much time with you. I was looking at the entrance times for the middle school and I don't know if there's a middle school rep available to talk about it, but with the entrance time changing and we're just allowing kids to walk the halls, I was curious if what, like, say we go fullback, how that will look with all of the COVID precautions? And whether this is just changing it to that, like it, next year it's all good to go when we're back to completely normal, fingers crossed. That's all. I don't know. You don't even have.
I think these, they began these handbooks, you know, when life was normal.
That's fair. That's fair.
And, and I, I know that there has always been a concern at the middle school with little people showing up at like 6:00 AM and, and so, right, Lauren?
Yes, yes, correct.
And so I, I believe we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but I also believe that these decisions were made long before we entered this world.
Sounds good.
I move that we accept the handbooks with some of the revisions, a few things that we've discussed with a few, I think, changes here and there, but I would move to accept these handbooks.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, that would be unanimous, Mary Beth. I have communicated with most of you that we are hoping to have a meeting, Zoom meeting on July 27th to interview three companies in our superintendent search.
Hang on Catherine, do we have to do adventure time too?
Yeah. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Need a second vote on the handbook.
So I move that we accept the adventure time handbooks as proposed in, in our board packet.
Have we, just great, have we gone and looked for the gender language in there too, just to cover bases? I'm assuming yes.
You sure will, Ashley.
Okay. Good enough for me.
So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, that would be unanimous.
And then I would move to approve the additional board meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Um, does that come for the consent agenda?
No, it's the, the additional.
Oh, I'm tired. Just ignore me.
Yeah, we're not to consent yet.
Lord, I apologize to everyone. I'm sorry.
We're on L, right here.
Ashley's trying to speed us up.
Like, let's just go.
So do I have a second for the meeting?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm working with Mary Beth on Wednesday to get an agenda together for that meeting. We're contacting the companies. So I'll keep you posted. Okay. M?
I'll move to approve adding the doors to the P H D and activities be converted to electronic entry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Mary Beth? A motion for the cameras?
I'll move to approve the cameras for the fitness center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Also unanimous. The Otis Elevator Contract?
Downs moved to approve.
Who's second?
Ashley.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Unanimous. Okay. Let's see. Steve, do you want to cover? That is a potential action item. The city of Urbandale and they, they're wanting a waiver for the tennis courts and softball field that they own for COVID.
Yes. And by the way, we've asked allers if we should do the same and they said many districts are not, but they said it sure can't hurt to do that for our own facilities. But your summary was exactly right. They're asking since we utilize those facilities or any of their community organizations, they're asking us to basically sign the waiver that removes them from any liability if somebody were to, to get sick due to COVID.
I, I move to approve it. I think that it's, I mean, if we're the ones who are approving our activities in their facilities.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I would ask too, like Stephen, Catherine, if you, just speaking of the city, Urbandale being the small town it is, if, if you all hear updates on the pool plan, could you let us know as, as soon as possible? Cause I know that the city's kind of going back and forth on that. So. Thanks.
The probably next thing will be at their next meeting. I'll, I'll try to check with AJ and see if it's on their agenda.
And by the way, that was a unanimous vote, a no opposed, I hope. Okay. Steve, do you have anything on the?
I jumped ahead a little bit.
We all are mentally. So Steve, anything on the superintendent report?
I do not. It's pretty much covered all the other fun stuff we had.
Okay.
I moved openly consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on any of these items, including all the payments, the contracts?
For A, for the board meeting minutes for the last meeting, those are not correct in there. For what, for what I can see, oh, it's fine. For, for I can see for A I has a explicit as we pick the hybrid model number one instead of number two. And then I know that on Symbly, if you go to the last meeting, you can see the minutes and it's more filled out than the one that's provided in here. So I'm assuming that's what voted on. But I still think that that one was wrong on the other one too.
Who did you say voted for? Repeat that, Ashley, sorry.
No, for the, for the 629, when we took the vote for which hybrid model, it, we voted for hybrid model two and it's listed as that we voted for hybrid model number one. So I just want to make sure that those are correct going forward.
Yeah, thank you. And Ashley, I don't know how those minutes got actually put in there because they weren't complete and I hadn't published.
That, that's what I figured. I was like.
I only got them finished today. We'll bring them forward for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. That sounds good.
That's, that's what I thought too. They didn't, yeah, we're done.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't accidentally voting to approve that because I was like, that's not right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So I don't know, given all these, let's do a roll call. Okay. Let me get my list here. Hauser? Yes. Ashley Anderson?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
There Geiser?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Stacy Anderson?
Yes.
Smiths?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Yes, it is. Thanks guys. Okay. There is one other item that Steve would like us to kind of think about. I don't know. I think probably most of you read through it. It probably will be a matter that we will need to work on. From my perception, yeah, we don't have extremely good information right now to make any decisions on that issue. It'll probably be kind of on hold until we know more about what our model's going to look like. And maybe more information on how many students actually are going to utilize the transportation.
And again, we'll probably know even August 13th, we may not know a ton, but I'm guessing since Rolling Green was to start in two weeks, that I'll be having conversations with Durham. I meet with them weekly right now. They haven't said it yet, but I'm assuming they're at very soon, like at the end of the month, we'll say, where's our check? Or they'll send us a bill or something, but I have sent a question to allers because our contract does say that the agreement is for 179 days. And if at any point those actual numbers get reduced by 5% or more, that the parties can renegotiate at the request of one. So I guess I'm, I'm probably giving you a heads up at some point. I'll ask for negotiations with them and maybe it'll be looking ahead is, you know, if X amount of days go, then you know, here's what. And then my first question to her was, I have read nothing new on the CARES Act and I think it goes till December, but I could be wrong. So I was hoping she had some more insight on that. So just again, a heads up that it'll be, again, as we had it multiple times last year, we may have to do it every month as well because we just don't know if and when we'll be back in school and when we'll be back out. So.
Is that 5% a reduction in the number of days that they're providing services or the number of students?
Let's see, it says the average daily number of routes, midday runs, shuttles or after school runs. But again, if we don't have, you know, even if we went to school, if this, right now, those numbers are so low, that means that would mean fewer routes.
Yeah, I imagine your, the numbers are going to stay very low for, even if we were in full, full blown school. So thank you. We need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thanks guys. Long meeting.
Thank you guys so much for all your hard work over the last five months.
Thank you for your great questions and support, really, truly.
Allowing all of our kids to interrupt.
That's the fun part.
Not mine. Bye bye.
Good night, everybody.